Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the general bylaws of the town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. I'd like to welcome you tonight. My name is Norman Orrell. I'm the town moderator. I'd like to introduce the folks on the stage to you. Let's see. I'll have to do it by memory. So, to my left here, it starts with Lillian Drain, Town Clerk; Rita Garbutt, Town Administrator; Mark Rich, Town Council. This is what happens when I have a list. Mitzi Hollenbeck, Selectman; Aaron Berg, Selectman; John Powerley, Selectman; George Alopoulos, Finance Committee Chair. Who's next there? I can't...
Go for it, Norman.
Bill. Say it again?
Dan.
Dan. Dan Holland, sorry, thank you. Ryan Tran, Finance Committee; Katie DeRozier, Finance Committee; and...
Todd Hennessy.
Todd Hennessy, Town Accountant. Sorry, I didn't get the list tonight. On page four. We'll get to it. The moderator and Town Clerk have appointed the following as tellers for the meeting. On the left side, Lorraine Carbone; on the right side, John Oliveri; the center front in stage is Bob Marshall. All of the above have been sworn in by the Town Clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied on the volume town meeting time. As a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings, it is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in the front in each of the aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be in a microphone to be recognized by myself. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you'd like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone may talk. Generally, it has not been an issue, however. I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. Shouting from seats, booing, and cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question if you're at a microphone. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask you to hold up the yellow card that was issued to you as a registered voter this evening. If I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there's a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This is printed in case we have a ballot vote by secret. We may not use it as a ballot, but we have it just in case. Do not lose your voting card. You cannot get another one this evening. Few words about a motion to reconsider or rescind. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider on any article can only be made once. I would also like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium. If I were to ask you to stand and honor our country by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. You should have received a copy of the town meeting warrant. Does anyone require a copy of the town warrant? In the audience, please raise your hand if you need a copy. I see one hand over here, another hand in the middle, couple hands in the middle. The tellers will be back with one for you in just a moment. Anyone else raise your hand? I know there's one back in the corner there. Is that everybody? Okay, that looks like everyone has one. Now that we all have a copy of the warrant, I would seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Motion was made in second. All those in favor of moving to waive the reading of the warrant, please say aye. Any opposed, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. I would also mention that we have three non-residents that might be called upon to speak or may wish to speak. We have Mark Rich, Town Council; Todd Hassett, Town Accountant; and Robert Barbosa from the Middle Bar Gazette, although I'm not sure if he's speaking. But I'd entertain a motion to approve those non-residents to speak if called upon. Do I have a second? Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And with that, I'd entertain a motion for Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 7, to approve the following collective bargaining agreements recently negotiated and ratified by the Board of Selectmen between the town and the Lakeville Permanent Firefighters Association for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, the town and the laborers' union relative to employees in the library, highway department, office, clerical, and administrative positions and supervisory positions for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, funding for the cost items in the first year of the set agreements to be found in the fiscal year 2018 line item transfers in Article 3 below.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And, Mr. Prowley, would you care to speak to it?
Yes. I'll first say that we did the police union in our June meeting. So this is the balance of the unions and non-union raises excluding the treasurer and Town Clerk, which will be in the next motion. And the total cost of this obligation is $78,885, and it's broken out between the fire laborers' union elected official raises, treasurer and Town Clerk, and non-union raises. And the total, once again, is $78,885. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And if you could send a copy of the motion down. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I see no one going to the microphone. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 1, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. Declare the vote passes unanimously. Article 2?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to increase the salary of the elected treasurer collector by the amount of $2,201 and the salary of the elected Town Clerk by the amount of $1,945 and transfer from the wage and personnel contractual obligations line of the fiscal year 2018 budget approved by the vote taken under Article 1 of the June 12, 2017 annual town meeting, the sum of $4,146 to fund said salary increases.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to it?
I would. This sum, as John alluded to, is to provide for the increases for our elected personnel of our treasurer collector and our Town Clerk, which needs to be done on a separate article in accordance with, I guess, Mass. General Law.
All right, thank you. And does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See no one rising. This is a two-thirds vote. I am going to ask the tellers to count this. So if tellers could prepare, all those in favor of Article 2, please raise your cards and hold them to be counted.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-eight.
Fifty-six.
Thank you. Please put them down if you haven't. All those opposed to Article 2, please raise your cards.
Zero.
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 Thank you. Declare the motion passes unanimously. Article 3?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2018 for the various accounts in the general fund as shown on the chart printed on page five of the warrants.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to it?
I would. There is a list of transfers on page five, which this is to transfer from a number of different line items. We have our first line item on the left-hand side to transfer from, which is taxation, which was additional new growth that was unanticipated from last year, which we are transferring to pay some prior-year unpaid bills, tax, legal tax, foreclosures, WBA's interest in medical. Our next piece relates to Articles 1 and 2 that we just voted on, to transfer from the wage and personnel contractual obligations line to fund our contractual obligation increases along with our raises for our union, for our non-union personnel along with our elected officials. The next series of line items for transfer is coming from a majority of free cash along with taxation. You can see the transfers are going to the OPEB trust fund, $250,000; stabilization fund, $149,810; debt service capital project stabilization, $681,351; water infrastructure stabilization fund, $13,000; pay down the debt service principal and interest, $482,990; property and liability insurance, $4,000; Berkman's compensation insurance, $4,000; community development committee, $5,000.
All right, thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 3, line item, community development committee fireworks from $5,000 to zero.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I think I heard a second. Okay. So you have a motion and a second. As mover of the motion, would you care to speak to it?
Yes, I would, Mr. Moderator. There's a lot of organizations in town that raise funds, you know, for the community from everything, from the arts festival to the Friends of the Library that raise funds for all the programs at the library, pay for all the museum passes at the library, the PTOs, which raise money for the schools, for supplies, for programs, field days, the Friends of the Seniors who also raise money for some of their programs, the Apollonacut Boosters Club raises a significant amount of money to support the sports programs in town, the Lakeville Police and Fire Associations as well. None of these organizations have ever received tax from the taxpayers to fund any of those programs. I don't think it's appropriate to spend $5,000 for the Winterfest for a 20-minute fireworks display.
And, yes, sir. Would you care to speak to it?
No, I'm waiting in line next to him.
Oh, you're ahead of schedule. Anyone else would like to speak to Article 3? And actually, to this motion to amend Article 3, I should say. Yes?
I think we have in the past, or actually, last year we did it. It was donated funds, correct?
You asking me? Yeah. Yeah, so every year, it's a fundraising effort that happens on behalf of the Community Development Committee. This year, we thought that we would ask the townspeople if you want to support the fireworks. If not, it's not a problem. You know, that was really what came up, you know, to the point of no other organizations have requested, actually have received this type of funding. We have not actually received any requests from other organizations. So we figured that we put it out there for the taxpayers to decide whether or not you want to do it. We're still in the process of raising funds for this year's Winterfest. If it happens to go through and we raise enough money for the fireworks this year, then we have them, otherwise we don't. So we thought we'd just put it out there.
Are there any other, anyone else wish to speak to this amendment, to the article? Seeing none, what we're going to vote on first is just this amendment, whether we should amend or not amend the original article. And then, once we do that, we'll go back and vote on a final article. So this is just a vote to amend. It will be a majority vote. All those in favor of amending Article 3, as noted, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to amending the article? The motion to amend passes by majority. With that being said, is there anyone who would care to speak to the amended Article 3? Article 3?
Yes, on Article 3. I would, this is just a question of water infrastructure stabilization fund, $13,000. Why are we, why do we have to do this? I thought we just closed it out.
So that, that piece is specifically to address the water connection for the police station? So we have remaining funds in that water stabilization account. I believe it's $253,000 if I'm not mistaken. So we have an estimate for the hookup of the police station water line for $270,000. Did I do that math correctly?
Yeah. What conventional accounting...
Sorry, 257.
Are you paying for it out of the, out of the police station account?
For the, the water line piece? So we, we put the water stabilization infrastructure fund, so whatever was left in it from paying off betterments in the past, that's what we've designated to be what is going to end up paying for the water line for the police station.
Yes.
I would be the only one who doesn't know, but what is the...
Could I just have your name quick?
Martha Schroeder, Three River Bend. What is the OPEB trust fund?
So would someone care to answer OPEB trust fund?
I would be happy to answer that. So the question was, what is the OPEB trust, which is the OPEB trust fund? So that is a fund that has been established, which is to pay for contractual obligations or retirement obligations for post-employment health insurance for employees. Right now, currently, the liability that we have for the town is approximately $13 million of paying for future retiree health insurance costs. So that is on a funding schedule, so that, similar to the pension, where we are paying it off a piece at a time, so that in the future, we don't end up having to pay additional costs in the operating budget for funding health insurance for retirees.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 3, line item, OPEB trust fund from $250,000 to zero.
Is there a second? Motion, a second. Would you care to speak?
Yes. Oh, by the way, my name's Rich LeCamer. Sorry. The, this was rejected at the annual town meeting, and now it's being brought up again to fund during the special town meeting. And the concern that I have is that even if you put $250,000 in this fund every year, it's going to take, I believe it's only eight million, not 13 million, but whatever, it's going to take you 40 years, you know, to fund this account. And everybody should know that the town has always paid as it goes within the operating budget, which happens to be $248,000 in this year's budget. So there's no obligation for the town to, to put this money aside. The federal agency and, the federal government has said, well, it'll be a nice thing to do, but it's not a requirement. It's not a mandate to be done. The state has a $17.8 billion requirement for unfunded health insurance, and they have put $85 million in that fund, and we're using cigarette tax money. And if they're going to fund it, it's going to take 200 years for them to fund it. So I think that personally, that since we have always paid it as we go, it would make more sense to use this money for other purposes in the town, like maintaining roads and stuff like that, where we could borrow money, and if we're going to spend $250,000 a year, then it would make sense to do that instead of taking this very valuable dollar to the taxpayer and use it for another purpose.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion to amend?
I would, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
So what has recently happened, which is actually coming from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is the body that creates state and local governments' accounting standards. What has happened is that this liability has become part of the financial statements of each city and town within the entire country. What that does is, if you don't have a funding schedule, it will impact your bond rating. Although it's not mandated necessarily that we start to pay down this obligation, we look at this, it is an actual liability of the town of Lakeville. It's also a liability of every town, city, district, school district. We are paying real funds, where we are paying current operating dollars, which otherwise could be used to free up for current expenses, where we are paying, I believe, and I'd like to ask the Town Accountant, you know, for the breakdown, I'm not entirely sure that it was $286,000 for the retiree health insurance this year, so I'd be curious to know what the number actually is. But this is a liability that's real, similar to our liability for the roads. If we were to look at the, really, the estimate that we've had for the cost of repairing, replacing all the roads, we're looking at eight to nine million dollars there. So these are real liabilities that we're trying our best here to project for the long-term financial health of the town of Lakeville. And this is in accordance with an actuarial funding schedule, that this would be the amount, the amount that we would need to pay in on an annual basis for 20 years so that we could fully fund our liability, so that it's no longer affecting the operating budget for our town. And I think that it's important to look from a long-term fiscal health responsibility standpoint to say, do we really want to burden our future generations with this operating expense?
Anyone else? Yes?
Bill Marks in Bells Brook Road. Mr. Moderator, I have a request for a point of information. The point is, if we fund this with $250,000, is that money locked in there, or would it be available for other purposes as money that we would put into the stabilization fund would be available?
I can answer that as well. We've joined the Peacock Trust, which is the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. That money is available to be taken out in the need that it does need to come back out. So all contributions that go in can be retaken out in the event that we need to. The amount is $250,000, which is different from the amount that was changed on town meeting floor in the annual town meeting by $20,000 due to the lost interest that the earnings would have generated in that time period. So by not investing in the future, we lost another $20,000. That is the power of compounding interest, which is why we are on a funding schedule and why we would like to pay for that.
The power of compounding interest at a half a percent?
It's actually much larger than that. There, it's not invested in typical banks.
It's not in a bank.
It's not in a bank account. It's actually invested by a professional money manager with the Plymouth County OPEB Trust.
Thank you.
Would anyone else care to speak to it? I see no one, or yes?
Just a point of clarification on Barbara Mankowski. With respect to the bond ratings, just like in mortgage financing, I'm assuming if you don't have a good credit rating, it impacts the amount of money you can get for an interest fee. So obviously, if we do have a better bond rating, that is impacting our ability to have more affordable lending. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that will impact directly our borrowing with the police station when we go up for the bond.
Okay. Do we have any perspective on what the scale of that is? I mean, we can talk about $20,000 in lost interest. Is it somewhere in that range?
I, I can't speak to that in particular.
Thanks.
Anyone else? If not, again, we're voting on the motion to amend. And... I'll just read it again. It's been long enough, just so you know what you're voting for. So you're voting for a motion to amend Article number 3, line item, OPEB trust fund from $250,000 to zero. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed? Thank you. You may put them down. Declare the motion to amend fails by a majority.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 3, line item, pay down debt service principal interest from $482,990 to zero.
And do I have a second? Have a motion, a second? Please speak to it.
The reason why I'm amending this one is that, you may not realize it, but the selectmen have proposed that we use all of the free cash that's available of $1,671,000. The town has never used all their free cash in a special town meeting at the fall. They've always left money available for the annual town meeting in the spring. As a matter of fact, for the annual town meeting, they used $929,000 of free cash with a combination of the capital items and some budget items. So I don't think this is a great idea, that the town go ahead without understanding what the budget requirements for next year's budget, that they go ahead and use all of free cash to pay down the debt. And what they're paying down, and Mitzi hasn't explained what they're paying down, is they're paying down the design services for the police station. I'm on the police station building committee. We don't even know what the police station's going to cost at this point, and the additional costs associated with the police station. And the debt schedules that were put together back this past September include spreading out the cost of that over an extended year...
Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed? Thank you, you may put them down, declare the motion to amend fails by majority.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 3, line item, pay down debt service principal interest from $482,990 to zero.
And do I have a second? A motion and a second? Please speak to it.
The reason why I'm amending this one is that, you may not realize it, but the selectmen have proposed that we use all of the free cash that's available of $1,671,000. The town has never used all their free cash in a special town meeting at the fall. They've always left money available for the annual town meeting in the spring. As a matter of fact, for the annual town meeting, they used $929,000 of free cash, with a combination of the capital items and some budget items. So, I don't think this is a great idea, that the town go ahead without understanding what the budget requirements for next year's budget, that they go ahead and use all of free cash to pay down the debt. And what they're paying down, and Mitzi hasn't explained what they're paying down, is they're paying down the design services for the police station. I'm on the police station building committee. We don't even know what the police station's going to cost at this point, and the additional costs associated with the police station. And the debt schedules that were put together back this past September include spreading out the cost of that over an extended year, number of years. And to take all of this money and pay it all down in a short period of time, all at once, doesn't make any financial sense to do that. And also, when you look at it, Mitzi pointed out, she said there was $8 million worth of roadwork that's done. There's $20 million worth of roadwork done that needs to be done based on the Beta Group. There's $15 million on the capital plan for the next five years that need to be done. It would make more sense to put a plan together to discuss all the alternatives before we go ahead and spend all of our free cash to reduce it down to zero, and have none of it available for next year's annual budget. It makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Would anyone else care to speak to that?
I would. To address those issues, included in the $482,990 is $400,000 for the police station design. That went out, we went out for that, I believe it was about a year and a half ago, almost, for the article to, actually, it was through a bond anticipation note, where what happens is it goes over five years. So, that needs to be paid back in a proportionate measure, so it's roughly $80,000 per year. We have actually done some significant capital improvements, where we have used bond anticipation notes, so as we look at the long-term debt schedule, what we see in the upcoming budget, we are looking, again, in a long-term focus. So, as we look at the upcoming budget, we see that we have $110,000 due on a fire truck pumper, we have $80,000 due on this police station design, we have another $20,000 due on a backhoe, we're also paying off $82,000, well, $80,000 is on a backhoe, which has another four years to go. So, we are looking at what the impact is of the short-term borrowing that has been done on the operating budget. Again, at the last town meeting, what happened was that we had a base increase to the schools, and what we need to do with that is the schools ended up having more money going into their operating budget, so it leaves less money available for the financial, the rest of the departments in the town of Lakeville. So, as we looked at this, we said, well, what can we actually do to try to free up some operating cash, so as we go into the budget season, that we can look for the operating needs of the town itself, knowing that we have a higher percentage that we need to contribute to the schools themselves? So, this was an opportunity for us, as we have a bond that's due for $982,000 roughly, where we are going to pay off a portion of that to free up some of the additional cash for the operating funds, for the operating budget. We also have additional funding sources that we can use for when we sell real estate, like what happened with the sale of the Howland Road property, along with what will be the sale of the police station when that goes to fruition, along with the sale of the assessor's office, which all were items that were voted on at town meeting, where we can actually take those funds, and we can only use those receipts to pay off long-term capital projects, which does not include a police station design. That's not actually a capital asset. The police station design has been underway. Certainly, we are paying the architect as we go, so we would like to be able to pay off the debt that relates to it, since the design is almost complete, or it's going through that phase, it's going out for bid. So, that is the purpose of doing that, is really looking at the long-term financial health, again, and ensuring that we are taking care of those needs, looking in a forward focus.
Go ahead, Scott King-Parley.
Yes. We also have available funds, certainly in the regular stabilization account, which if, if this sheet is voted through, we'd have in excess of $1 million. In the debt service capitalization projects, we'd have approximately $1,004,000 to use for what the taxpayers may deem to be necessary expenses, so that, and certainly, the OPEB liability that Mitzi alluded to, that you could take money out if so needed, we're not suggesting that, that would be in excess of $700,000. So, one might think that you're emptying the coffers out, but you're really not. You still have some very strong stabilization accounts, and you have some strong assets that you're in the process of selling. So, I certainly recommend that we pay down debt. As a matter of fact, I was one of the ones that wanted to pay down much more, I wanted to pay down twice as much debt as is on this schedule, so that it was negotiated down from the number that I would like it to be, which was approximately $900,000 of paying down debt. Thank you.
Yes.
Pretty sure I know the answer to this question, Lea Fabian, 30 South Kingman Street, but is there any rule that says we have to do things the same way we always used to when we're making our budgets? I'm serious.
I'm not sure who can answer that one, but it sounds really rhetorical.
Well, because Mr. LaCamera keeps alluding to, we used to do it this way, we used to do it that way, we used to do it this way. Do we always have to do it the same way? I mean, don't, can't we entrust our new selectmen or current selectmen to come up with a plan? Isn't that why they get voted in? I, I mean, I'm serious.
I'm just not sure who can answer that one.
Yes. I, I'm not sure what the answer is. But, you know, to that point, you know, what our long-term plan is, and by putting the free cash, which is one-time money, and I'm happy to explain if somebody wants to know a little bit more about what free cash is, but it's really one-time funds that the town has received for various things, whether it happens to be selling the water tower, we had a debt payment for about $240,000 that we didn't have to pay, and that was done by a previous action of town meeting. It's all one-time funds, which is why we are putting additional funds into the capital project stabilization fund, so that we can handle our long-term infrastructure needs as well as our capital projects' needs. I think that the benefit of doing that now is to be able to smooth out and project what we're able to do for capital expenditures as we move into the annual town meeting. The only thing, you know, as John alluded to, that we are paying down is some of the existing debt payments on the bond anticipation notes, and that is done in design so that we can free up operating funds in the budget, so that we're not, we're not, we're really transferring one-time payments into available cash in the operating budget. So, you know, certainly, it might be a different approach than what has been done in the past, but we really are looking, again, I probably can't emphasize it enough, at the long-term financial health of the town, and making sure that we're looking out to the future.
Just one more comment, you know. We just spent $250,000 for the OPEB fund out of free cash at this town meeting. You're going to spend all the free cash that's available right now, $1.6 million, and there's no more free cash coming between now and the annual town meeting. If you use free cash for the OPEB fund, how are you going to fund the OPEB at the annual town meeting if you don't have free cash available?
So, I mean, to that point, as we move into the budget process, we are freeing up available cash in the operating budget, as I've said, through the payment of long-term debt. We also have the ability to pay down some of our longer capital projects by using fund transfers from some of our available funds with the sale of the Howland Road property. We haven't gone through the final budget process for the next year, but looking at it, that is a transfer that we believe we need to make sure that we're taking care of as an annual transfer.
But you're spending all your free cash, you used $929,000 at the annual town meeting last year, which included the $250,000 for the OPEB. Now, you're using $250,000 again for free cash, and none of it is going to be available at the annual town meeting. It makes no sense.
So, just to that point, again, free cash is a reminder, is coming from one-time funds. If we have one-time funds, we believe that, in accordance with the financial policies that we adopted as the board of selectmen, along with the finance committee, that one-time funds should be used for one-time expenditures. You know, while we would like to continue to fund the OPEB trust, and we believe that we should be doing that, we're not going to be using operating funds for that purpose. If we happen to have operating funds available, then we would be using it for, for different purposes. If we have additional one-time money from sale of capital assets, for example, we can transfer some of that out so that we can move money around, so that we can pay for these one-time expenses.
Anyone else? Yes.
I think one of the problems is, to what Rich was talking about, is that we don't know what's to come in, in our future budget, so we don't, we don't know what expenses we have. So, to take away all our free cash, leave us with absolutely nothing in free cash, doesn't make fiscal sense. That said, we talk about not taking one-time cash to fund long-term operating expenses, long-term debt.
Can people hear? I just want to make sure.
No.
No, I apologize.
You might need to really get up on that mic.
Okay. So, I'm sorry about that. So, it doesn't make sense, from a fiscal perspective, to take away all our free cash when we don't know exactly what we have coming in our, for future budget needs. And we're taking one-time cash, and we're funding something that's considered a long-term debt, which, for all intents and purposes, can be considered an operating expense. So, if we're taking $250,000 this year to fund something that we know is, is going to need to be funded for the next 30 years, it, it doesn't make sense to use this money for that, and it, there is no sense of urgency to take the funds during this town meeting to allocate funds that potentially could be used in, in future, in a, future discussion. So, this does not make sense to me.
Point of clarification, the OPEB is off the table. We voted, and that's, so...
Correct. I was going to clarify that.
Okay, thanks.
So, did I see someone coming up over here?
Maria Martin. I think he just clarified what I wanted to ask anyway, but we are talking about the payment debt service, and that's what he was also alluding to, so.
Yes.
And...
Anyone else?
I think, you know, just to that point, again, I, I want to reiterate the fact that free cash is one-time money. So, if we were to really look at how the one-time money came to be, we have, again, there's local receipts that come in, sometimes in excess of what we have estimated. We can't predict that those funds are coming in. We may have, again, a sale of a capital asset that might result in debt payments that we don't have to make on it any longer, which are one-time funds that are coming in as well. We may have unexpended budget amounts from other departments. For example, if we had a couple of police officers that we knew retired, or not retired, but left the force, and they weren't actually hired again until July 1st, which was done, you know, in accordance with what the chief had wanted to do. Those are some items that generate free cash. They're not recurring revenue sources, and I think it's important to note what our recurring revenue sources are, to make sure that those are the sources that we're using for our operating expenses. Again, anything that comes in on a one-time revenue source, we have adopted, again, through the finance committee and the board of selectmen, that those are funds that should be used for one-time expenditures.
I see no one else going to a microphone. So, again, I'll, I'll remind you, this is a vote on the motion to amend Article 3. I will read the motion to amend again, to refresh your memory, and it is, "I move to amend Article Number 3, line item, pay down debt service principal interest from $482,990 to zero." Majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to amendment. Thank you, may put them down, declare the amended, motion to amend fails by majority. Now, would anyone care to speak to the final amended Article Number 3? I see no one raising. So, this is, again, a majority vote, just a vote on the amended Article Number 3. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I declare it passes by majority. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the PAC Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $50,000 to undertake facility capital improvements, the PAC Department, for the PAC Department for the fiscal period, July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018 inclusive.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And would you care to speak to that, Mr. Parley?
Yes, the, the funds are actually being earmarked to put in restrooms at the John Pond PAC. That's been on their capital budget request for a number of years, and they would like to go forward with that. Thank you.
Okay. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, it's a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your card. I declare vote passes by unanimous. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the Landfill Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $8,000 to operate the Landfill Transfer Station for the fiscal period, July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018 inclusive.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to it?
Yes, these funds will be used to cover the cost of the second-year fiscal year, 2019, of property and liability insurance for the land transfer station. We actually purchased two years of coverage in fiscal year 18. There'll be no charge for our 2020 coverage. Thank you.
Okay. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Barbara Mankowski, again, 17 Johnson Drive. So, just a quick question on this. Is this the case where the fees will be raised down the road for people to use the transfer station to absorb this cost, or is this going to be an ongoing town expense?
I, I think the ongoing expense is simply $8,000 a year. It's more or less that we're paying for two years and skipping one year of payment, so it really is in the operating budget, but we bought two years' worth of insurance. There won't be a bill the next year, in 2020.
Anyone else?
Yeah, another point of information, I'm Aaron Burke, Board of Selectmen. We, the town currently subsidizes the transfer station to the tune of about $100,000 a year. It's, it's an enterprise account, which is ideally, takes in the money to support its own budget, but it hasn't done that for quite some time, at least as long as I've been on the Board of Selectmen. So, we're mindful of the cost to the residents, both in terms of the sticker and the bags, and we try to find a balance as to what is reasonable, based on what we think people can afford, versus if we raise the, the cost too high, and it's comparable to the cost of a private trash hauler, more people will go to private trash, and we'll have even less revenue. So, it's a constant annual balancing act that we try to, try to do with respect to the cost for the taxpayer.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 5, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All opposed, raise your card. I declare the vote passes by majority. Article 6.
That was my finest hour. Article 6. "Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the unissued amount of bonds relative to the construction of an elevated water storage tank and pump station authorized by vote of the town, taken under Article 18 of the town meeting of June 15, 2009."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to it?
I would. This is relative to the bond issue for the construction of the water tower and pump station. $1,171,602 was not used and remains on our books as unused or unissued debt. The water tower and pump station were sold to the City of Taunton in June of 2016. Therefore, this unissued debt needs to be rescinded. This is a housekeeping measure for accounting purposes.
Thank you. Would finance committee care to make a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone else care to discuss? Seeing none, majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All those opposed, Article 6, please raise your card. I declare it passes by majority. Article 7.
Who would vote no to that?
There might have, it was a tough call between someone being slow to put it down, so to be safe, we'll call it a majority.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the unissued amount of bonds relative to the construction of a water line to the town office building authorized by vote of the town, taken under Article Six of the town meeting of June 13, 2005.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
And speak...
This is relative to a bond issue for the construction of the water line to our town office building. The project came in under budget, and $4,000 was not issued and remains on our books. Therefore, this unissued debt needs to be rescinded.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to it? Seeing none, again, a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your card. Declare the vote passes unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $1 million to pay the cost of the following water pollution abatement facility projects: repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to the agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners for repayment of project and financing costs by such property owners, including without limitation the payment of all costs thereof as defined in Section One, Chapter 29(c) of the Mass. General Law. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum of money under GL 44 or any other enabling authority, which amount may be borrowed through the community's septic management program offered through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust or otherwise. And further to authorize, the Board of Selectmen to take any other action necessary to carry this project.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Every year I get up, Bob Palucci, Chairman of the Board of Health, the Town of Lakeville has a program that we lend money to homeowners of the town who have failed septic systems and they don't have the money to repair them. So up until recently, we borrowed money for 0% and we lent it out at 5%, and we made some money. That's been working out for as many years as we've had it. All the interest we've been putting back into the account so we have more money to lend. We currently have more people that need the money than we have funds. And we also have the water lines being run on clock shores soon that will make those houses, if they want to have them hooked up year-round, they'll... Most of them will need new septic systems. So this allows people to borrow money. It gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds. It goes on their tax bill and gets paid. For people who might not have the credit, people that, you know, might, for whatever reason, not have a job at the time or whatever, can't get a loan, we lend them the money. It goes in their tax bill. And we make a little bit of money in the whole process and we help the people out. So that's what we're anticipating. We won't borrow $1 million. We only borrow it as we need it. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you. I'll take a copy of your motion while the Finance Committee makes a recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Moderator, I want to add to this. One of the things too Bob pointed out when he pitched this idea to the Board of Selectmen was that the money is borrowed at an interest rate of 2%, but the borrowers that we loan the money to pay it back at 5%. So it actually kind of becomes a funding mechanism for this fund. This fund operates outside of the town's operating budget, so it's not... Doesn't impact the budget in any way. And this vote only authorizes us to obtain the money. We wouldn't necessarily go out and get the whole big chunk of money in one shot. Like Bob said, we'd borrow it on an as-needed basis.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak to the article? Seeing none, it's a two-thirds vote. Let's try raising our cards. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your card. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article Eight, please raise your card. I declare it passes unanimously. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Chapter Two, Section Six of the town's general bylaws by lowering the town meeting quorum from 100 to 25.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the motion?
I would. You all kind of made me look foolish tonight, not like that's hard to do, but we always have a hard time getting a quorum at town meeting, especially special town meetings. I think when you have an issue of road acceptance or whatnot, a lot of times you can get more folks out. But I think that... I liken this to town meeting in general being a lot like a car that uses a carburetor, okay? It's certainly not new technology, but it's kind of what we're stuck with because the Mass. General Law makes the laws. And until they say you can sit on your couch and press buttons on your phone to vote at town meeting, we all need to come here and actually act like adults and have conversations about things. But with that carburetor, we currently have a two-barrel, and we want a four-barrel. And by going down to 25, we can get these meetings started on time. They're fast, they're efficient. But wait a minute, isn't that cutting people off from democracy? No, not really. 100 people was just as arbitrary as anything. And 25 actually cuts to heart of the matter, where we can get in, have an efficient meeting, it can start on time. And in meetings where we don't have things of controversy but are just as important to have for the sake of getting town business done, we can get that business done.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does not recommend approval.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, it's me again. If there's any action that this meeting could take that would allow tyranny of a small clique or cabal in this town to take action that might be in the interest of a few but not in the interest of many, this would be it. I know it's sometimes onerous to come out on a rainy evening. We did it tonight. We'll do it when we have to. 25 people is not enough of a quorum to ensure the democracy that we enjoy in this town.
Yes, sir.
Can I rebut that?
Um...
Just quickly, Town of Freetown has 10 people for a quorum. So democracy works. And actually, with a lower quorum, it forces all of you to come out and fight for your right to be heard.
Again, if you would like to speak, go to a microphone. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Jenkins. I live on Pickens Street. I love the comment about the carburetor, and I just want to go back further, being in the automotive business. The first car was produced in 1902 by Mercedes-Benz. But I believe that the way we advertise a town meeting is more like 1846. So apparently, there's some people in favor of this. But I look at it and say, well, here's what we do. We go to the general store and bang up something on the wall. We call it SABIS, but it's really the general store. And then we go to the one official building, the U.S. Postal Service, and we put it up there so we might see it. And then we go to all the other places where we usually go to get feed or grain or food and put it up there. And finally, we ask whoever prints the weekly paper to put it in the paper, and that's how we advertise. And I look at this and say, this is crazy. It's 1846. Why doesn't the town, for free, put something up where I can give you my email and you'll send me a notice? I read something in one of the blogs that there's over 7,000 registered voters in Lakeville?
Yep.
And we're down to, well, we only want 25 to show up because we can't get them to show. I don't care what Freetown does. But I do think that if you sent out an email to 3,500 people, you would never have a problem. Because I believe most people that don't get here, or a large percentage of people that don't get here, have no idea that there's a town meeting. There's no communications. I didn't go to SABIS. I didn't go to the post office. I didn't get the Middle Borough Gazette. And I didn't stop into the town offices. How do I know there's a town meeting?
May I answer?
Thank you.
So there are a lot of frustrating aspects of government. And certainly, as, you know, we all get involved in them, there's a lot of things that seem like they're of a different century. We're trying to address some of those issues with regard to the fact that we are looking at a new town website, which is a plus. Unfortunately, even things such as the windstorm that we had the other day completely destroyed that sign at the corner of 105 and 18, which is also a way that we were able to communicate with people about town meeting. But what I always find that's interesting, I think that the premise behind this article is really to get more people involved. There's nothing more that I would like to see than more people involved in government. And it is archaic, and unfortunately, we have to work around those constraints of a very archaic format, which really kind of comes from the state itself. And that's even harder to change, you know. And so we're really facing that. And what I found is, I think when we introduced this article, it might have been three years ago, which was actually ironically, I think it was a special town meeting before, when we didn't have a special town meeting and we were unable to conduct town business, was that this was the most controversial article. So we thought to ourselves, if we put this on the town meeting warrant every single town meeting, maybe we'd get a quorum, which actually is kind of ironic but funny. So I think that, you know, I'm happy to hear a lot of people who don't agree with 25 people running the business of this town. But again, 25 is an arbitrary number so that we can get people interested, so that maybe people would be coming out if they felt that their interests were represented by only 25 people. I think a lot of times you have people where if there is a representative, maybe there's 100 people, which again is still arbitrary compared to the 7,000 registered voters in the Town of Lakeville, but maybe it makes you think a little bit more about, maybe I should get to town meeting. And again, it's on a Monday night, it's, you know, late, it might be rainy, it's... You know, there's a lot of things that unfortunately we're stuck with those constraints, but happy to take any and all suggestions.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Christopher Dietz. I live on Highland Road. I'm new to the town. So I work next door in Berkeley, and we had a similar issue just come up, because I had to be part of their town meeting as an educator. We were facing an override, so I was there as a teacher. But they faced the same issue. They were only looking for 75. And they have less registered voters than we do... I mean, less people in the town than we do registered voters. And they still voted down to get to 100 voters. And they turned it down. They were only looking to go down to 75. I totally understand, from your perspective, it's hard to run everyday business because you need those voters. But I do like your idea. If you do throw it up there every time, I'm sure you'll probably get enough people here saying, hey, we don't want that. I mean, there's no easy solution to that. I mean, but I don't think 25 people should really be deciding, you know, for the 7,500 voters, the actual thousands of people that are here in town. It's just something that I don't fully support.
Mr. Moderator?
Actually... A shame, but a couple of years ago, I created a Friends of Lakeville Town Meeting. We have several hundred people on there. And we do send out a notification on... It's a Facebook page. And several hundred people have signed up for it. Everybody is welcome to sign up for it. It's Friends of Lakeville Town Meeting. Please sign up. You'll get a notice.
Thank you. And Mr. Proctor?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I certainly look at both sides of it. And I would not support changing from 100 to 25. But it certainly is disturbing to a politician that the same 80 to 100 people come to the town meeting and we spend $25 million. There was certainly a controversial build-out at the old hospital site, Cisco, which I don't know that we did any different in announcing the meeting. There was more publicity behind it. But there were over 1,000 people that did show up. So people do show up when it's a contentious article in front of them. But I'd rather do it the other way and make 100, 200, and make it people suffer that they have to come and make a decision. But I would not support reducing it to 25. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
With your permission, Frank Starett, Crest Drive. There are some things that come from the stage that are not bad and benefit the people. This particular one is not only bad, it's dangerous. Because a quorum will no longer represent, I believe, 7,704 Rita registered voters in the 2016 town report.
7,752.
7,752. I stand corrected. Okay. There's a strong parallel here for the people. We have 50 states, we have two senators apiece, we have a total of 100 senators. Correct, Mr. Moderator? I think you'd agree with that. Now, the percentage that the Chair of the Selectmen is presenting to you is that at 2:00 in the morning, one, only one out of the 100 senators could show up. And that would be declared a quorum, and they could vote that one single person. Laws, change their taxation, do anything they want. This is really a bad idea. And I think I'm going to encourage the front table to move toward... Mr. Jenkins was, I think, on the right path. And we need to push the state a little bit more to get more people involved. And yes, electronically is coming, you know, when we can do it safely. But right now, in the phenomenon of Lakeville, if you've got little kids, I guarantee you, one parent cannot be here. They're gonna stay home. So the solution is not reducing the quorum, and this is not a really good idea. It's bad. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I would argue that 100 is not representative of the town either. 100 is way too few people. And this is a town, it's not the federal government. I didn't even get... I didn't even follow that whole senator thing. But that's okay. And I appreciate... But I appreciate everybody's input because I don't necessarily bring this up... I personally think it's a good idea, but I don't necessarily bring this up to know that... I mean, I know that you're not gonna vote yes on this. But I want to have this conversation because I know it's a problem. And I hope that you'll go back to your homes and talk with people about it and say, geez, maybe the next time there is a town meeting, you should come because it's important. So at the very least, if I can proselytize for the sake of town meeting and use this to do it, I'm gonna do that.
Yes.
Barbara beside Old Meadow Lane. Okay, I don't really agree with being baited to come here. Okay, I come here when I have time. I have a child. My husband stays home so I can come. It's important to be here, but to do this, to get us here, is ridiculous. How long has you had to wait to get 100 for a quorum? And how long did it take to start the meeting? Have you ever had 25 and wanted to start the meeting? I mean, what are the numbers?
Yeah, absolutely. We haven't been able... We actually weren't able to meet one time because we didn't have a quorum.
How long ago was that?
I don't know. Was that a year or two ago?
Two November's ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Last year, we waited an hour and a half.
I mean, typically what happens, it's the same 70 or 80 people that come all the time. And I applaud you for coming. But then we typically have to drag our feet for an hour, and we have to call people and post stuff on Facebook, and we have to text people and get people here. And again, it's... We're talking over 7,000 people. Whether it's 100 or it's 25 or it's 80, I mean, pick a number. But for the sake of being able to function properly, 100 doesn't always work. So the idea to make it less would mean that we can start on time. And this is no less... Making it 25 is no more threatening to democracy than making it 100. It's a tiny fraction of the voters.
25 is very low.
I know.
There are other concerns with parents. Parents can't get babysitters. Town meetings can last past 11:12, like the last annual town meeting. These are things we need to discuss. Babysitting options would be a good idea, you know, making it so town meeting doesn't go past 11:00 PM. So if you do get a babysitter, you know you'll be home at a certain time. And you're not worried about staying out late.
All right. Thank you. Was someone else coming up to the mic over there?
You know what I'm...
Yes, I'll go to this one first.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
I knew I should have gone to the other one first. Is there really a need to do that?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. That's what I thought. Wanted to check. This is a motion to move the question which means suspend all debate. It is a two-thirds vote to end all debate. We will have to count this vote because I don't think it'll be an unanimous one. So if the tellers could count, all those who would like to suspend debate and move immediately to voting on the article, please raise your cards. to voting on the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All those opposed to suspending debate and moving the question, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Zero.
One.
Excuse me.
One.
One.
Sorry? Didn't see it.
He moved. I declare the motion to move the question passes by two-thirds vote. In that case, we move on to voting on Article 9. This now will be a majority vote for the article. All those in favor, yes, actually, yes.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. The, this is a rule of order that you are changing. A rule of order is always changed by a supermajority.
I will ask town council to answer you.
Always, always. A rule of order is changed, you know, that's not a...
And the town council will respond to that.
This is as large a deal as you can make in a constitutional deal.
Yes, town council.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you, this is a motion to amend a town bylaw. Amending a general town bylaw is simply a majority vote. This is a majority vote.
So, if I can explain that some more, this is a bylaw change. So, all those in favor of Article 9, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article 9, raise your cards. I declare the motion fails, most likely by a supermajority. Before going on to Article 10, I would like to perform a little housekeeping. As your moderator, I always keep intent of any potential conflicts of interest. I would let you know that I filed the disclosure memo with the town clerk for this article as I am a member of a club that is an owner of one of the properties. However, I am not on the Board of Directors and therefore have no financial interest, and I believe I can do my duties as moderator without prejudice, but I would also like to let you know that too, and the disclosure is on record. With that, Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Hoag, Planning Board. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning, town zoning map as identified in Section 3.2.1 of the zoning bylaw by changing the zoning from business to residential for the following parcels identified below by assessors' map and parcel numbers comprising of approximately 27.4 acres of land as lots numbered 1 through 10 on a map showing the affected parcels. Parcel 1, Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-1A. Parcel 2, 9 Staples Shores Road, map 58-8-1D. 3, 11 Staples Shores Road, map 58-8-1B. 4, 13 Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-1C. 5, 15 Staples Shores Road, map 58-8-1E. 6, 17 Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-1F. 7, 19 Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-1G. 8 is rear Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-1. 9 is 21 Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-1H. And 10 is 25 Staples Shore Road, map 58-8-002.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to this article?
Yes, these parcels of property are obviously on Staples Shore Road. They comprise of the property that was associated with the Lions Club. Before that, it was Camp Joe Hooker, there was a racetrack down there, and those were all zoned business. They were zoned business because they were part of the Lions Club, the Camp Joe Hooker, and they needed to be, the same property needed to be business so they could function as a, as a club. Now that these are all individual parcels, people live on the parcels with their business property, it's, they have to go through extenuating hoops to get anything done on their property, put a deck on their property, they have to get a special permit and so on and so forth. So, we proposed to make these residential. We had a meeting, we voted unanimously to have them zoned residential. The other committees have been involved in this as well, and they also were pushing to get these zoned residential. It just makes it easier for the people living there.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any further discussion?
Hi, my name's Catherine Cook. I live on Staples Shore Road. As a resident, its zoning as a business has not caused us any inconvenience. Other residents I've spoken to, it has not caused any inconvenience to, and really fear more it being zoned residential than it staying business.
Okay, thank you.
I can talk a little bit about that. Ma'am, was that just you specifically, or, I mean, because the Planning Board had public hearings on this and invited everybody to come and talk about it, was there...
There was myself, my husband, and one other resident.
I think, I'm on the zoning bylaw review committee, and we addressed this early on, or I should say, we came up with a concept of rezoning this to make the zoning consistent with what the use is in that neighborhood. So, the neighborhood isn't a business neighborhood, it's residential. Our building commissioner pointed out in those meetings that the setback requirements for commercial are different than residential, and that is where the issue would come up. If you were to locate a shed, for example, on your property, you'd have to push it back closer to the center of your property than you'd be allowed to, and if it was residential, or other such renovations or structures, I should say, if you're going to put structures on there, it limits your ability to use the parcel as much as if it was a residential zone.
In my conversation with other residents on the street, none of us have been limited by that. I put, we put a shed on, we got the permit, it's in the right spot.
Okay.
I mean, I've not heard that complaint from the residents.
Right, well, that's, that's kind of more of a universal observation relative to the zoning. I think that, well, let me ask this, what are you concerned about if it becomes residential?
Residents going into the property behind it. That's, I'm not concerned about a business going in there.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, somebody could build back there, if they could build back there with the zoning being the way it is, because somebody built a house on your parcel with the zoning the way it is. That property back there, my understanding, is wet, and I don't think that that's going to be built on as a result of that.
I just think that doing this just makes that process easier and more likely to happen.
I respectfully disagree. I don't, I don't think that that's a reasonable determination based on the facts.
When they told us they couldn't build behind us on Fuller Shores because it was too wet, and you couldn't put the private, you couldn't put the road off the private road, that turned out to happen anyway. So, again, with all due respect, I don't necessarily believe that it's not an issue.
I understand.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Seeing no one rising, this is a two-thirds vote. I'm going to ask the tellers to count. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your cards and hold them there to be counted.
Forty-four.
Fifty-six.
Thank you. Please put your cards down. All those opposed to Article 10, please raise your cards.
Two.
Thank you. You may put your cards down. I declare the vote passes by the two-thirds required. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relative to accessory buildings or structure as follows. Amend Section 6.0 General Regulations subsection 6.3.2 by deleting the language shown in strike through and inserting new language shown underlined as follows. No accessory building or, that's underlined, structure shall be located within the required front, side, or rear setback unless a special permit is granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, where a special permit is sought under Section 7.4.6 for an accessory building or structure within the setback on a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming lot. The Zoning Board of Appeals shall additionally make finding that the accessory building or structure shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. And Section B of that is amend Section 7.4 Special Permits by adding the following new provisions to the end of subsection 7.4.6, specific uses by special permit. Accessory buildings or structure located within the required front, side, or rear setback, special permit granting authority is the Board of Appeals, all districts. The Board of Appeals may impose certain restrictions, including but not limited to size, height, and/or number of buildings or structures.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Yes, this is a little cleanup that we were asked to review by the building inspector, zoning enforcement official, and he's... We wanted to direct people who wanted to add buildings or structures to their property, and we just wanted to clean up the verbiage on it, and we wanted to specifically designate the Zoning Board of Appeals as the permit granting authority, and we thought this was the best way to do it.
Thank you.
They thought it was the best way to do it.
Did the Planning Board then have a vote?
Unanimous, yes.
Okay, thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote. I'll ask the tellers to count again. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your cards to be counted.
Fifty-nine.
Thank you. You may put your cards down. All those opposed to Article 11, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Zero.
I declare the vote passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to accept seat upon road as a town way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, an easement or fee simple in the way and related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by SciTech Inc. on file with the town clerk as shown on Sheets 2, 3, and 4 of the plan entitled subdivision-as-built-plan seat-upon-preserve in Lakeville, Mass. dated June 5, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to it?
Yes, most certainly. This is seat upon road, a subdivision built down off of Route 105. It was, it's been a long road for this subdivision. The developer had his difficulties, and the people who lived there, actually, the residents of the subdivision, really kicked in, and they, they did a lot of the work themselves when it came down to the end. They were very diligent in getting their, everything done that they needed to get done. They made sure they cleaned everything up, they made sure they, they worked with the developer on getting their bounds in and everything that they needed to get done to meet the requirements of the Planning Board. The Planning Board actually voted unanimously, and we worked with them as well. We tried to help them out as best we could, but Jeremy Peck actually, maybe one of his last acts as highway superintendent was to give a letter stating that he, you know, appreciated and approved of all the things that they did down there, and he put a stamp of approval on it, so.
And did the Planning Board vote?
I just said that, yes.
No, I'm sorry. I missed it. Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes unanimously.
Article 13. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Queecashan Circle as a town way as laid out... as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain an easement or fee simple in the way and related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by SciTech Inc. on file with the town clerk as shown on Sheet 5 of the plan entitled Subdivision as Built Plan, Seat Upon Preserve in Lakeville, Mass. dated June 5, 2017. Now, Mr. Moderator, this is just another road off of that subdivision that I had just spoke of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And the Planning Board voted?
Unanimously.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, this is a majority vote, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Article 14, and final.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Ron Circle as a town way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain an easement or fee simple in the way and related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by SciTech Inc. on file with the town clerk as shown on Sheet 3 of the plan entitled Subdivision as Built Plan, Seat Upon Preserve in Lakeville, Mass. dated June 5, 2017. Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, this is the last of the three roads on that subdivision, and it's all-inclusive.
And the recommendation?
Unanimous.
And the Finance Committee?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I see none, and before we adjourn, I, before we adjourn, I haven't declared the vote, and I have something else to say. I declare the vote passes unanimously, and I want to do a special thank you to the school and the school department. They had to make some rearrangements last minute for us to have this room, so special thanks to them for their support of our town meeting.
Move we adjourn, Mr. Moderator?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.